Evening, welcome to the September 18, 2018, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting is now called to order. Commissioners Noon and Jenkins will lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're again thankful for everything that you do for us, your watching care over us, and the guidance that you give us on a daily basis. We just ask Lord now that you be with this meeting, guide and direct us in the decisions that are made, and we just ask for forgiveness, Christ name, amen.
May I pray respects in the flag? I pledge allegiance to my life for the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. The Chair calls for the motion for approval of the minutes if there are no corrections. Move to approve?
A second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We'll move directly to the regular agenda as we do not have a consent agenda this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the Board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The Board also considers Platts. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. The applicant, number one, number two, the staff, and three, the general public, those in support and in opposition to the request. If you're part of a large group with common interests, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than restating the same information. When addressing the Board, please begin by stating your name and address here at the microphone, and try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the Board will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on October 11, 2018. Thank you. Staff, regular item, agenda A.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, will be held to consider application Z-18-09 filed by Clefresia Rogers to rezone Lot 1, Block 17, Look Out Hill, from single-family 5 to heavy commercial zoning district located at 515 North Court Street.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? If so, please come to the microphone. Give us your name and address, please.
Clefresia Rogers, 17457 County Road 366, Winona, Texas.
Thank you. Tell us about your project.
It is, well, it is to be, a community meeting and event center for seminars, workshops, individual trainings, special events, possibly smaller weddings and receptions.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you so much. Staff?
Thank you. As the applicant had stated, she's requesting the rezone in order to use the property as a meeting and event center. Previously, the building was an administration building for LISD, it was offices for the COG, and it was, the last use was actually for a church. All those uses are actually allowed in single-family zoning. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with all the surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
What could there be, if we changed that, could a club go in there?
It could in heavy commercial, however, I don't think it would meet the parking requirements.
And I was going to ask about the parking requirements. What are the parking requirements in heavy commercial?
It depends on the use. So, for an event center, it depends on whether it has seating, or whether it doesn't have any seating, then it's based on square footage. For, if Tracy said for like a nightclub, it would be one parking space for every two persons, and so they're not going to have enough parking for a nightclub unless they acquire more land.
Okay, but you think that there isn't a parking for it?
Yes, ma'am, for an event center. If they're not, I mean, that building, yes, it should have enough parking for an event center.
Do you know how many parking spaces it has now?
Let me go to the aerial. It has the parking lot in the front, I believe. I'm not sure, does the applicant know how many parking spaces you have on the site? Yeah. It meant the parking requirements for a church, and a church has a similar parking ratio to an event center.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, it's time for the general public. Those in support of this event center, please come forward and speak to the microphone. Anybody in favor that wants to speak? Yes. Are you in support, ma'am?
Uh, yes and no.
All right. That's all right, you can come forward, and then give us your name.
My name is Iris Stancor. I live at 310 North Cut, which is southwest of the building, and we lived there for quite a while, and enjoyed the sunset, and enjoyed the top of the hill because that's one of the historical spot, and we enjoy the privacy in that area even though it is zoned, everywhere beside us is zoned commercial. And we're afraid that, it's just a concern, if it is for the best of the city, then we'll go for it, but with them putting the event center, we are looking at a lot of traffic, and we're looking at, what about the noises? And so, if that happened when this take place, then how would it affect the people around that area? You know, what about our privacy? Would they consider, say, put a privacy fence, or can there be a, like, a restriction for noises, like, what if they decide to have a big party? And what if they sell to somebody else, and, and like you said, a club come in? How would it affect us? Unless the city decided that that whole area is going to be commercial, then it won't affect us, then I don't worry about it, but I'm just concerned about it because we really, it's such a nice area, and people during July the 4th, people go up there and they just surround there, watch the fireworks, and will that happen with all this thing happening in the city? So, because I live here 40 years, I'm more interested in what is good for the city? Is this event center good for the city? If it is, then I'll go for it. So, that's why I said, I don't know, it depends. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Stancor, did I get that correct? Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak in support of, or just ask questions? All right, hearing none, anyone that wants to speak in opposition, please come to the microphone.
Madam Chairperson, and ladies and gentlemen, appreciate y'all's service to the city. I don't know that I'm opposed to it.
Introduce yourself first.
My name is Philip Works.
Thank you, sir.
I own adjacent property, and therefore I was notified about this evening's meeting. And my only concern is much like the lady that just spoke, the use of it in the future would be the main thing that might concern me, whether it be a club, or whether it be a tower vulcanization plant, or any of those things that were listed that could be under heavy commercial. That would be more my concern than anything else, and I, an event center that serves the community, I think, would be wonderful. I wish there was a way it didn't have to be heavy commercial zoned in order to accommodate that. So, the possible future use of it is really why I would be concerned more than opposed, but concerned about rezoning it to C2. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Works. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Hearing none, do we have any additional questions of the applicant?
Angela, is there any way, as we propose this, they have brought in two things. I understand it doesn't meet the parking requirements, but with their concerns, it is a pretty neat little opportunity for protection for us and these people that do happen to live there, if somebody came in after, hopefully you're there for 50 years, but if somebody came in, how do we have, can you give us something that would say, for their feeling better, do we have anything that would give them some protection from that happening? Because once we open it to heavy commercial, we have just said, okay, it's all here, do what you want. I understand a club might not work for parking spaces, but is there anything we could incorporate into this request tonight that would give some protection later?
What we could do is, we could probably, and Michael might speak better to this, we probably, we could do a plan development and limit the uses, but we would have to go back, I believe we'd have to go back and re-notify because it's a plan development, go back and re-notify, do the plan development, but they could, they could request a plan development to allow for an event center, but not any of the other uses that are, you know, that are not liked by the neighbors, such as a nightclub, liquor stores, those are typical uses that people don't like, that are allowed in C2. We could do that.
I think it's a great opportunity, but I do think we're leaving ourselves unprotected on the backside.
Yes, sir.
I'm just asking for their comfort, and for the other citizens that might be interested in that, too.
Yes, sir.
I worry about putting C2 in the middle of a residential area.
Why did we go heavy commercial with this?
If you look back at the zoning map, there is a lot of C2 just surrounded by it. There's C2 to the south, C2 to the north, as well as to the east and west. Mr. Works's property is zone C2 on High Street, and so there's a lot of C2, and so that's why we felt, you know, the future land use map does not support it, but there is adjacency to the south and to the north.
So, C2 is all the pink?
Yes, all that red, pink, that's all C2.
Would the applicant come back to the microphone, please? So that everyone can hear, I just wanted to get a couple of answers. Is this a property that you're purchasing, or is it a rental?
I am not purchasing, and I am, I guess you can say, yes, renting.
You're renting it, please. Do you have hours of operation that you can tell us what they are?
I do not, because that would depend on the actual event. Now, if it's a daytime event, say it's a seminar or training, I personally commit to being there from maybe seven or eight in the mornings to that evening when everything is over to clean up and clear out. I can also personally say, no event would go beyond midnight, including clearing out, even with a reception or something. So, I don't foresee any wild events.
Are you proposing a remodel to this facility?
No, just a little facelift.
You're going to use it in an hazardous condition?
Yes, ma'am.
Will alcohol potentially be served?
No.
It will not?
No.
What was the event that was there on Sunday? Do you know?
It was a church that was already going there using it. They have church service there.
Okay.
She doesn't own the property, she's going to be renting the property.
Any further questions of the applicant, anyone? More clarification of the staff?
Yes, if, if we did this as a plan development like Ms. Choi suggested, that would put you back at the beginning, it would set you back a month. Is that going to be a major imposition for you?
No, I would just have to do justice. I would like to begin and, you know, really start with it as soon as possible, but I'm willing to be in compliance with whatever it takes.
Thank you.
Are you going to get a year's lease, or a two-year lease, or what?
Actually, I'm not sure how that will be worked out right now. I'm familiar with the owners, and I've just asked to use it for the events at this time.
Any further questions of the applicant?
Do you currently have a lease, or are you fixing to sign a lease?
I do not have a lease yet, no. Everything is kind of, all's right.
All right, no further questions, thank you so much. If there are no further questions, the Chair will call for the motion. Hearing none, what's our procedure?
If there is no motion, then I think you're basically sending it on to council without your support. So, you know, kind of with the comments that I've heard, it may be better to kind of discuss it a little more and give staff and the applicant maybe some better direction, as far as, you know, hey, we'd be okay with it if you went back as a plan development, or, you know, we're not okay with it at all, and then, you know, maybe vote to deny it as the heavy commercial. But I think that feedback is kind of what we're looking for.
Would it have been best to motion, or at least withdraw, or ask for this to be tabled? I'm asking, is the procedurality of ask to be tabled so that you would have time to go back? And my next question, if we did this plan development, it's another month before it reaches us, but the process for her will be limited, she's not going to have to go start from A and write to Z. Is it, it's not going to take a lot of her time for that process to happen? Just our process of meeting and improving?
Yeah.
Okay. The bureaucracy should be very simple.
It's the same process.
Okay, thank you.
So, it failed, the agenda failed, item failed because of lack of motion and support from the commission, right?
Yes, but it doesn't stop the process.
It doesn't stop the process.
Because this is just advisory board to council.
It will go to council on October the 11th.
And nothing, and it will not, and there will be no inflection of most of ours desire to look at this PD. I'm just trying to get the council, that would be our recommendation, or should we have put that into a motion? Leaving it blank, I don't know the process either.
I mean, you could, you could essentially postpone, I wouldn't say table, because when you table something, you're essentially killing it. I don't know that y'all necessarily have the authority to table anything, because you're strictly making a recommendation, but that's, I think what you're trying to do is find a solution, and I think it would either be, hey, take it back and, you know, bring us a plan development back, that, you know, and work with staff to, you know, give us a little more feedback as far as what you're okay with, what you're not, or say, you know, we'd rather, we'd rather see it as a plan development, go ahead and take a vote. I mean, either way, I think the applicant could move forward going to council if they chose to, unless y'all just decided to postpone a vote a month, but even then, I don't think you can just kill it from going to council.
Would we need to put it within that motion, the restrictions that we're willing to put into it?
I think, I think what y'all need to discuss is what y'all are okay with and whatnot. We have to be careful because we don't want to sit here and try to negotiate zoning either, because that's contractual zoning, but I think we do want to give the feedback as far as what y'all are opposed to with the commercial zoning, so that we have the direction on how to bring back an appropriate plan development.
Do we have to make a motion to bring it back up again?
No.
Because we, it didn't move forward because of the?
I got a suggestion, too, because this is, who's council, from whose district? This is Councilman Wade.
I guess.
Would love to get his input, he's new and fresh and excited for our city. Would love to, you know, how you get that involved, I know we're just our little part, but would love to see him involved in this, too, because this is a unique area. If you've driven up there, it is viewed.
Yes, it's transitioning, but at the same time, you know, and that's the thing, when you have old school buildings and campuses and big boxes and things, what does the second, third, fourth, fifth generation look like? We're there now, and we're having to look and see, well, there's somebody that wants to do something with it, and trying to just make sure those appropriate controls are in place, so.
Well, I kind of think an event center there is probably one of the highest and best use of that existing building.
Yeah.
Does an event center, it doesn't have to be C2, it can be a PD, right?
Yes, it could be a plan development with restricted, with limited uses, and so, you know, with that, y'all could, you know, postpone it and then come back, and then the applicant could come back with a plan development, or y'all can recommend denial. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so you're, we could make a motion that said that we recommend that we send this back to you to come back next time as a plan development for an event center that might address some, which restrictions?
I think our no vote party does that, I don't think we have to motion that there are.
Yeah. Well, and, yeah, I mean, you don't have to take another vote, because, like you say, it is a no vote, so if they came to us tomorrow and said, you know what, I want to take our chances, let's go to council, we're going to tell council that y'all did not support it, so it's going to, it's going to come with a P and Z recommendation of no. So, that's going to tell them enough, of course, we're going to tell them a lot of the discussion, so, you know.
Mrs. Stancor, you've heard these conversations, and you're familiar with what the concerns are, and you understand the procedure?
Yes.
For moving forward?
The thing that I don't understand is, if they are not the owner, you are the owner. Okay, the owner is here, so that's what I'm saying, the owner should be here to talk about this, because he owns the place, and so he's here, and I understand what you're saying, so if you don't zone it as, what's that?
Yeah, you need to come up to the microphone.
People at home can't hear you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyhow, if the discussion that you have, and if you allow them to have an event center, I think it's really good for the city, it's just that don't zone it commercial, and especially AV commercial, that sounds scary, you know, so, because I'm more afraid of the people that come after them, you know, so, does that help?
It does, thank you. Any other comments before we put this agenda item to rest? Yes, sir?
I'm not the only owner, Seven Pillars is the owner of the building.
Who is, sir?
Seven Pillars Properties, and we acquired the building some time ago, and my wife is wanting to put a event center in it, and we were wanting the building to be used, because we're having to continue to pay them high taxes on the building, so, and I was very alarmed, and Scott was as well, because of it being zoned as heavy commercial, and I said heavy commercial, you know, and I didn't really understand what that meant, and, you know, by her elaborating on it more, it could be a number of things, like they were saying in the future, you know, someone could put something, you know, that's just outrageous there, and that's, like she said, it's a very unique area, and we would like to keep it quiet, but have a nice place for people to have an event, you know, whatever it may be, within those constraints of no alcohol and not late at night, because we're not late-night people, and we want to make sure everybody's out and cleaned up before, you know, the next day. So, that's what I'd like to say to the council, okay?
Thank you so much. I think we can safely terminate this conversation at this point, and with the understanding that we will be revisiting this in the near future, no doubt. Thank you. We appreciate everybody speaking. Regular agenda item B.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-18-10 filed by Roughneck Radiator to rezone approximately 7.2907 acres of abstract 150. JL McCarty survey tracked 11 from agriculture to heavy commercial zoning district located at 1716 Toledo Circle.
Thank you, is the applicant present? Please come to the microphone. The applicant's representative.
My name is Travis Crafton with Johnson &amp; Pace, address 1201 West Loop 281 in Longview, and I'm here on behalf of Roughneck Radiator, and the owner, Chris Tubbs, is here with me today if there's any specific questions about the business. And the property has been zoned agriculture for some time, and it was previously used as a commercial-type facility, so while specific use may be changing, we're not looking to change the type of zoning, I guess, if you will, other than it is agriculture, and we're looking to go to heavy commercial to properly use this facility. So, it is new ownership, a new business, Roughneck Radiator, they're currently in Longview now, and we're also looking to get a new sign and per the sign permit, we need to have it appropriately zoned, so that's what we're here for today, and we appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any questions of the applicant's representative? Hearing none, staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agriculture to heavy commercial zoning district located at 1716 Toledo Circle, which was formerly known as 1501 Sabine Street. The applicant is requesting to rezone in order to remodel and install a sign. In 2009, the property was annexed into the city, before that, it was a manufacturing plant, it was Fleetwood. When annexation occurs, the property is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation, and so therefore it needs to be rezoned now that a sign's being placed out there and some remodeling is happening. Toledo Circle is maintained by a text dot and is a collector roadway, which is appropriate for this type of development. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, any other questions?
Manufacturer that was in there was a trucker manufacturer, they could do it because it was outside the city limits at that time, and they didn't have to go back to rezone.
Yeah, outside the city limits, there's no zoning, so, yes, they could do it there, yes, sir.
How long ago was it, Fleetwood?
Or Frontier, I'm sorry, Frontier.
I mean Frontier.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, Frontier, I'm not real sure, but I know they, they closed before we annexed it into the city, I believe.
Okay, okay, thank you. Now, it's time for the general public, is there anyone that would like to speak in support of this agenda item? Please come to the microphone. Seeing none, anyone that would want to speak in opposition? Come to the microphone, please. I have a, oh, no, I don't have a speaker card, that's the owner, thank you. Hearing none or seeing none, any additional questions of staff? Or commissioners? None?
The only other C2 is that one small piece of property that's on the?
On the, on the west side, yes, sir. And that was a request in 2013 to zone that to C2, but to the south, there's industrial, and then the future land use map actually supports commercial there, yes, sir. And there's, and the use actually right to the west of it is a mini warehouse storage, which is typically light commercial, heavy commercial type uses as well, so.
Okay, thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Move approval as per second.
Moved in second, if any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Staff, an update, please.
Yes, ma'am, all three zoning cases that went before council last month were, or earlier this month, was approved, that's including the S U P and the rezone for the Kmart site.
Wonderful, thank you. Any citizen? Any citizen comments or commissioner comments? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.